Okay, the time is 6:35. I'll go ahead and call our mid-month council meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we thank you tonight. We thank you for the blessings in our life. We thank you, Lord, for our first responders on the front line, especially in this kind of weather. Lord, we ask their safety be provided. And I pray, Lord, that as we conduct our meeting tonight, Lord, that you will allow us to be prescient about the things that are before us. And I pray, Lord, that as we deliberate and think about these things, that we remember that we're doing this on behalf of the citizens that sent us here to do their work. And I pray, Lord, as we leave here tonight, that you will always help us to remember that the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in your sight. In Christ's name, amen.
Next is determination of quorum. And we have seven council members present and two via Zoom. We're all here tonight. And Ms. Wheeler is also here via Zoom. Next is comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
A couple of weeks ago, when I used this opportunity to share some situations and some challenges that are put on our public safety officials in dealing with, in particular, two areas of our city, I was very pleased by the response that I got from not only some of the citizens that ended up catching it, but our public safety officials, so myself. And then I've asked Lauren to join me to start working on some things to bring to this council, working with the leaders of both departments, LFD and LPD, in order to address this situation. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get something to meet. And then I'll be working with our council attorney, as well as the city attorney, to look at options to be able to mitigate some of these situations. So I'll keep everybody apprised, but I appreciate the support and the outreach that some have asked and volunteered their help. But I don't know that we need too many shifts in the kitchen on this. But I think with Lauren's background and my history with this, I think we'll be able to hopefully bring some remedies and some help to our frontline public safety.
Counselor Chavat? Anyone else? All right, see none. Now move to signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Before we begin with that, I think last week we had asked if Mr. Growth's voucher invoice would appear on the vouchers this week, and they weren't there. So, Controller, could we ask again what may be the issue with this invoice that's now set out there about three months?
Thank you. So similar to the email I sent you today that outlined where we're at, so the council services and charges budget is pretty much out of funding. The option I gave today was there's a PO to Bose eyeing up funds to make sure we have enough for the next set of invoices. It was about $3,500. I can remove that PO and make a partial payment, but the original recommendation was an additional appropriation request. I didn't hear anything more on if that was the route that anybody wanted to go. So.
So, I'm sorry, Councilman, I definitely did receive that email about the two options, but I guess where I'm struggling is we have $250,000 in the council discretionary budget. And, you know, we approve a budget for a dollar amount, and funds are moved around all year to cover everything. I'm struggling to understand, we've been doing that all year, or you have been doing that all year, why we can't pay these invoices.
Pull up the budget right now.
And we can talk so confidently about everything else that we're doing, but we can't find budget to pay a $5,000 invoice. I'm just really struggling with that.
So I'll address that. And then I actually have a different option that I came across today with our city attorney that I'll run by you as well. But again, so it gets back to your major budget classification. So the discretionary fund that we keep hearing about is capital outlay. You cannot spend capital money on service charges. You're locked into that category. But you do have $250,000. So if you wanted to buy a park playground, you could do that as a group. But a legal fee, we would need to move.
That was changed last year, right? Which, you know, we haven't had this problem in the past because our $250,000 council discretionary budget wasn't tied to capital.
So I have a budget comparison that shows you the last five years it has been in capital. I don't know where the...
Okay, so what's the solution, Tyler? Because we're paying invoices every time we need. But our legal invoices are the only ones that we don't seem to be able to find a plan to pay. So I just want to know what the solution is, and we need to get it paid because we owe the money.
I would add that even there, we had, because I brought my budget here today, too. We have $200,000 in the service charges. I can't see where we've spent $200,000 already.
22 budget for service charges, $150,000.
In this, the budget book, I have the printed budget book right here, $200,000.
Oh. I have a suggestion.
Well, I have a...
No, I mean, I'm talking to my chair now.
Please, yeah.
There's so much confusion. We don't have an internal audit going on. And there's so much discrepancy of who can do what and how can do what. I think it's time that we bring in some oversight. Because I could pay $20,000 for beer, but I can't find $5,000 to do something that was, that were, that's a state statute to do. This is something that we have to do. And if you did, if you had discretionary money, I mean, you had money that was not capital outlay money, right? And you knew this, then we could have handled this earlier. But this seems like a game being played to try to get us to pull an appropriation out. And so I'm just gonna call a spade a spade so we could play the game. And just like you said, we could find money in the capital outlay to play for the playground equipment. So your ABA stuff that you want to get paid for, we could bring it out of the capital outlay, and you could kill your bond since you can't pay my bills. Tap your hand if you want to, but you just made the decision, buddy.
But let's be clear here, there are no games. There are four major budget categories.
Oh, buddy, it is. Well, if we could just pause it, because I'm sick of it.
And again, I have a solution. If we could just...
You should have told me that solution A instead of telling me the crap.
Like I said, so...
Let's hear your solution.
Right. What we pulled today is Indiana Code 6-1 dot 1-18-16. And what this allows the proper officers of a political subdivision to do to transfer money from one major budget classification to another within a department or office. So again, what's a proper officer? The State Department of Accounts issued a bulletin on this. You all can do an ordinance transferring money from one category to the next without doing additional appropriation or going, doing a public hearing. So at the next meeting, we can pass an ordinance and approve the claim all at once.
So have you done that for every budget item you've done?
Today, at 2 o'clock, I called Bloomington to ask them what they do. They go through the whole additional appropriation process and will reduce one category and increase the next. And I thought that was going to take too much time, as we all seem to be on agreement there. So I had our attorney dig through. We found this transfer, but it wasn't clear enough. We found the bulletin. I think that's the best move to move forward. I don't, I'm not trying to be difficult. As I stated in my email, I would love to pay this and move on. I have no interest in battling over a $5,000 invoice. It's a waste of everyone's time.
Agreed.
So I can get with Chris after this, and we can start working on an ordinance to get that transferred, and we can get it paid at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
I don't think we need ordinance to transfer it. The fund should be there. I mean, even with your, the question that we asked you a second ago about the parks, you said you'd use the $74,000 within service charges. The only budget line there is the electrical, the electric bill.
Shh, Harper.
So that would cover that. So how, within the service charges, within the parks budget? So I'm kind of confused how within, you could pay for the engineering for the parking lot out of service charges, but not, when the budget is not there for that particular expense. But here, we can't do the $5,000. I feel like you're doing it okay, you're making a different rule for one invoice versus another, or not you specifically, but the discretion.
Well, I can assure you that I'm not, there's a significant amount of control over moving from category to category because it's illegal. I have no intention of doing anything illegal, so I don't participate in that. I don't know what you're looking at that shows just parks having money and utilities, but that's not the case. Now, I think we have a solution.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Because I don't understand the solution.
Please go ahead.
Sorry. Of course, my dog starts to bark as soon as I start talking. Let me start with the threshold question. The council budget is listed in the general fund, correct? It is a general fund item. Is that right?
It's a department within the general fund, yes.
And when we're talking about transferring from fund to fund, you're talking about transferring from another fund to the general fund, right?
No, I read it, it is to transfer from a major budget classification, which is what those four categories are, to another. So, I mean, we've had this conversation before about budget categories. If I put it in a 4.3, I can only use it in the 4.3s, which is service charges. If I put it in the 4.4s, I can only use it in capital.
And are you telling me there's nothing in the entire rest of the budget in service charges that you could pull from? Because here's what I think you're doing, Tyler. I think you regularly move major, within fund classifications, in a perfectly legal way, for all the other needs of the city within the general fund, anytime you want. That is perfectly normal. That is how you do your job. But when it comes to this council's attorneys and consultants getting paid, you're trying to hold them to the penny, not to that major fund, but to their specific line item, which repeatedly you have said on other occasions, and other people in the administration have said, the council approves the budget as a whole. We don't approve a specific line item for a specific department. And your budget, in fact, reflects that for some items, by line item, you end up with final numbers above that number that you estimated at the beginning of the year, and some you go below. So are you telling me today that there's no other fund within this category in all of the millions of dollars in the general fund where you could take $5,000 and get him paid? Because that makes no sense to me.
Again, you're putting the entire general fund together. So other funds, you budget by classification, and it stays within that fund. But the general fund, you budget within the major classification within that department as well. And again, the same thing I mentioned in my email to Lisa, I even covered out of the Controller's budget, $18,000 of the Baker-Tilly contract, out of a different service and charges in my budget. So I'm depleted. I did that to avoid the situation we're in right now. I don't know what else to tell you. We have a solution here that we can do this and knock it out. I've tried to help in the past without, again, dealing with conflict, but here we are.
For 90 days. For 90 days. It's ridiculous. It happens over and over and over again. But, Mr. Chair, I'll do whatever you and the rest of the council would prefer. It's just, it's gotten ridiculous. It's not even, I can't even take it seriously at this point.
Just to clarify then on, so that where I was confused, too, that I see $200,000 in our service charges area. So maybe we should talk about that, how that went from 200 to 150 for the councils. The budget book, it says 200,000. We can talk about that.
Yeah, we need to talk about that now, Chair. You have the budget book.
So...
So if it's 200,000, it should be 200,000.
I'm on page 61 of the budget book.
I have the actual printout today, as of October 31st. So, I mean, it's split, the service charges is split between multiple pages. You can see where legal starts. And it's, again, right here, hold on. Here's your encumbrance. So this is what's tied up to Bose for payment. And when I looked at it today, I could reduce the Bose invoice by 3,500 to cover it. But again, you do have, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and tell you don't have this bucket of money right here. You've got 250,000. So we can transfer it. I mean, we can transfer it.
Without an appropriation.
Without an appropriation. So you don't have to do the public hearing and the notice and all that. It doesn't take as much time. We can just knock it out. I don't know if you have the 23 that has the most accurate and current numbers, but again, I don't want to be difficult. Let's just do the route we have and knock it out.
I have the 2022 budget book that we voted on in 2021. And it shows that for services, the council had $259,313, not a 127...
50.
I'm sorry, I can't.
50.
791. Or is it 15736?
To be honest, after all the changes we made throughout the last year process, I haven't looked at that one. I look at what the ordinance was that was passed, and then these reports we have now. So the most accurate information you would have is if you had the 23 that has your current 22 revised budget, which includes encumbrances from last year.
How would our budget change after it was voted on? How would, what we approved?
I don't know what changes were made. But again, we have a solution we can do. We can, I mean, we can sit here and do this all night.
Yeah, but before we go to the solution, we need to understand how much money we should have based on what we approved in the budget, where we are year-to-date, and what's remaining. Like, that's real basic.
Right.
We need to understand that before...
Yeah, and it doesn't change.
...transferring. So it shouldn't change because we didn't approve any changes. They changed it.
This is the book that I was given with my markups during that budget year in 2021. And like I said, I got 259,313 in service charges. So which is 100,000 more than what you're showing up there.
Controller, if you can confirm that for us? We need to know that just fundamentally, right? This shouldn't be a gray area. We need to know that, and then we will take whatever necessary appropriate action that we need to take.
This is what I have from our system today. I mean, period, what's on, oh, I'm not sharing my screen. All right.
Well, I understand that that's what you have in your system, but how is it different from what is presented and voted?
I mean, I'm beginning, I'm gonna have to go back and look and make sure. But again, you have enough, so we just need to do the transfer. You've got 250 right here, capital outlay.
So I'm, is this the same in all of the other budget lines and the budget areas? I mean, are we, should we be concerned that there's $100,000 off in other budget, other department budgets? Or...
No.
Because we have budgeted for an internal auditor multiple years that would address these issues for the council.
Well, then you removed it this year, but okay.
We did remove it because...
You didn't hire him.
We wanted to get rid of the unfunded positions, but that was important for it to be there. Perhaps we should use our discretionary fund, like you were saying, and hire an internal auditor to look at this line by line.
And you would need it in your service and charges, so we need to do the transfer anyways, so.
Well, it might be for good reasons.
Let's do it.
So we, so our options then is, thank you. We can, I'm kind of leaning towards not paying any of our vouchers tonight until we take a look at this outside of payroll.
I agree totally.
Other than, well, with Republic and Sondheim Solutions, but the others that are on there, maybe we take a look at what budget line those come from and why they're there. What are other people's thoughts on this?
I agree.
And Chairman, this is Council Whitfield.
Yeah, please.
I would like to propose the question, is this the appropriate line that our discretionary fund should be in? And on?
It would be dependent on how you want to use your discretionary fund. So again, when it was originally introduced, it was for one-time things, for council projects, so you could procure any capital. So it's, I would think that given the history, it's in capital where it should be. But again, if you need some more funding, which is fine, we can just do the transfer.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I think it would be unfair to hold hostage all of our vendors that have performed their services for the city, contractually in some cases or others, for this one bill. So I would not be in support of not approving any bill because we're holding hostage and we're penalizing other vendors who are duly submitting invoices. I just think that's a bad idea, but that's, I'm one person, so.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I would agree with Tom in most, in most cases, but historically, you know, we've been on this council for quite a while. It's not fair, but it is common for bills to be held until things are done properly. We've had legal bills held. I remember the young man who had the landscaping business on Pendleton Pike. That poor man didn't get paid across three administrations, Paradise guy. So to be able to say that our, we don't have confidence right now in what the books are saying, and we want to put a hole so that we have that confidence, that would be something I would do in my personal and professional backgrounds. And I would make that same choice for the people of Lawrence, to make sure, sometimes you got to stop the whole train, you know, to fix, you know, to fix an axle. And we believe, I believe it's something that could be fixed very quickly. If everything's accurate, everything's tight, it might be a very short, short deal. I know I wait longer than 30 days on invoices all the time.
Mr. Chair?
Counselor, I think Counselor Chavis had a question, and then I'll get to you, Ms. Wheeler.
Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, the, this is a signed contract that we're legally bound to, like any of those other contracts that we sign. It's just for a lower amount. You know, we contracted this majority of council, approved that contract. The work was completed. The invoice was submitted back in September. To my knowledge, unless there's more out there, this is the most aged invoice, unless there's something out there we're not aware of, we need to just handle it. And that's really the only point I want to make, is that it is not appropriate for us to not pay people timely for their services.
Chair?
Rose Maroff.
Just for clarification and for my own recollection, according to the discretionary funds, didn't we create a committee that this would have to be reviewed by in order for the discretionary funds to be used? Am I remembering that correctly?
The grant committee, yeah, that 250, I mean, we have it in capital outlay. It's called discretionary. Those funds, we historically used for grants in the past. That's the only way we've really used them, for the most part. So it is still this council's discretionary budget. How we use it is based on our discretion.
Thank you.
That's true, because we paid, I'm sorry. I was just thinking about that now, I'm thinking about that. We pay laundry, we help assist laundry and more. We assisted the veterans. We assisted the youth over in my district at the United Methodist Church. None of those were capital outlays. Don't know if you had money, you know, split or something. Those were, you know, historical. I'm not accusing anything. I'm just saying those are things that were not capital projects that came out. Now, that could have been prior to your ordinance as well, and I don't, you know...
It was, but they were, they went to capital projects, roofing and other things. I, I mean, we have a suggestion here to fix this.
Yeah.
We could talk about this forever. This, you know, I think most of our heads are exploding here. We have a fix with this. Right now, to address this invoice, certainly there's other conversations about other topics, about this line, and the budget says this and this, but we have an option to fix this, which is take $5,000 from our capital, reallocate it to our services, and be able to pay this. So whatever we, whatever we can do to make this happen, I'm 100% we owe the gentleman his money. Here's an option that we can do this. So what, do you need to work with our council attorney to figure this, to draft up this ordinance, to move it over? And if we can get that done before the 1st of December, then we vote on this in December, and he gets paid on December, whatever day after our council meeting? That would be my suggestion.
At their council meeting. And I understand that, but I am still concerned how the number in the budget book is less than...
I understand. But that's, I'm saying, but that's a separate conversation. I think that should be handled, we're talking about vouchers right now, and we're getting off into other topics. We have an option, we have a situation where a voucher's not been paid for 90 days. We have someone that brought a fix to this that seems reasonable. We can talk about this other stuff at a different time, because I don't think, we're trying to boil the ocean here. We got to fix this issue, and I think this is a plausible scenario to be able to fix this particular issue. And then we can take time and talk about all these other things, like your book's different and...
It just seems like the issue, fix an issue that shouldn't have been created or shouldn't have been an issue to begin with. That's, that's somewhat where I'm at.
And this was, and I wish this, your solution would have been the first solution instead of the fourth solution, and we wouldn't have maybe been so up in arms, but I understand.
Wish I knew about this, but I'm glad to know about it now.
Right.
And it was interesting to me that even a city like Bloomington didn't know about it, so.
So I would make a motion to approve these vouchers. I don't want to hold hostage all the other vendors. I do not think that's fair, because we have a solution on the table to be able to pay this person for the work he did on the redistricting. So I would make a motion, we approve these vouchers, but with the expectation that at our next council meeting, that this ordinance is before us, that we vote on to be able to move the money from capital over to contracted services. And if there's other things that are coming up that we need to move more money over because of maybe Bose's bills and, you know, whatever, that would be the time to address it, so we don't have this conversation in January, which is in a new calendar year, which you don't have monies encumbered for. I mean, it gets really complicated, and I just think it doesn't need to be complicated. So my motion would be to approve these vouchers with the expectation that at our next council meeting, that we have an ordinance in front of us to be able to move that money so we can pay this gentleman before the end of the year.
And I'm going to second. And move it from where to where?
Move it from our capital budget, which is the council, what do we call that again? It was for the grants and that you brought up. So move it from there, 5,000 from there, over to contracted services, which is already out of money, correct? That's why we're having this conversation. There's no more money in that category, but we have a way to fund it. So that's what, that would be my motion.
But that's the dispute. There should be money in that fund.
Well, one correction. We don't, we don't know whether we have it or not. That's the issue.
All right, then we just...
If the budget book that was approved is right, we do have it. And that's the end of story. It gets paid, and we don't need to do an ordinance. So I think we're trying to figure out how to crawl before we walk. Let us know where we are year-to-date in our approved budget of $200,000. If $5,000 is there, we just pay it and keep it moving. We don't need to do an ordinance.
Right.
So that's why we need to know where we are. And Tyler should be able to get that to us very quickly, right?
What I have is right there on the screen, so yeah, I mean...
Based on what we approved in the 2022 budget. That's the discrepancy. It shouldn't be a discrepancy. I don't know why it is. I'm confused by it, but we need that answer. And then if the answer is, we don't have it, then we'll move forward with the ordinance. But we need to know that, because we have bill, we have other bills to pay for the rest of the year, to Tom's point. So we need to know exactly what it is, based on what we approved, and where our deficit is, so that we could fix it wholesale. But we need to know that first, before we jump to the ordinance.
And I'm sorry, this is Chris. Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, the other thing that I would say is, I still believe this council is being held to a different accounting standard for its own line items than every other line item in the city budget, and I feel that is inappropriate and unfair. Whether you pay these other vouchers today or not, I think you are being frankly strangle-held by this, and it's, it's not appropriate, because when other professional services are needing to be paid, they are... because when other professional services are needing to be paid, they are getting paid.
And then.
Without further action of this council. That is a true statement.
That's a very true statement.
We have, in the past and this year, done additional appropriations for professional services as well. Did an LRS or the roundabout. Have, when we needed it, we have come to you. And again, I hate how it's perceived and I will work on that and I want to work towards a resolution. But I want to be clear, if I was intentionally strangle-holding, I wouldn't even be here right now. Why would I be standing here? I have paid $18,000 in my budget for Baker-Tilly contract I didn't even sign. If I'm willing to do that, why would I be standing here causing problems? I've already, you know, so if I had the funding, I would be.
You shouldn't have had to pay that contract, Tyler, because that contract, that money should have already been in our budget. That was not an unknown expense. It was a contract that we signed. So once again, we need to know if, what, what do you have versus what we have? Because based on what we think we approved, there should be money in there. You shouldn't have had to pay Baker-Tilly. So that's a bigger issue. So if you could please just get us the information, I think we need to stop going roundabout it. We need that very specific information sent to us as quickly as possible, please.
Will do.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
Was it a second?
Yeah, Sean's connected.
And a second from Sharon. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, that I'll take a, so roll call vote. Counselor Wells.
I'm unsure because I'm not, do we have the money in the account? I guess right now it'd be no.
Okay.
This decision to approve all the vouchers.
Right.
Correct. Can you restate your?
Mine? My position is, I made a motion to approve the vouchers because I don't feel it's responsible and it's fair to not pay any vendor because of this one issue. And we have on the table a fix for this one issue. There's other questions. I understand that. But, and I'm sure they'll get resolved, but we're just talking about vouchers here. And so I do not want to hold the vendors of our city hostage that we don't pay them because of this one voucher that we know is going to get paid because we now have an option on the table to do this. And maybe there's a finance committee meeting that needs to be held and we can talk about what your book shows and what Gateway shows. So.
Your motion is to approve.
My motion is to approve all the vouchers. And we'll get this gentleman paid, I'm sure of it, once we get the money moved over from capital over to contracted services. I'm positive that's going to happen after these conversations.
Okay.
So the expectation that the next meeting, there's going to be an ordinance?
I'm hoping there will be.
We'll start with.
There will, there will be an ordinance.
Let me, let me start the vote over then. Counselor Chavis.
Okay, I'm going to say yes, but I'm going to preface it with, if we don't have this resolved amicably by our next meeting, I will be voting no until we get this resolved.
And you have to be on video.
She has to be on video.
I said yes.
You have to be on video, Counselor Chavis. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Staying with the Zoom theme, Counselor Whitfield. You're still muted.
My vote is yes.
Counselor Wells.
Okay, so we're voting to pay the bills as presented to us?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, now I understand. Yes.
Counselor Russ Maroff.
I have a question. Will this be excluding the one that has been the topic of conversation? Okay, so all of those with the exception of the one in.
Question.
In.
The one in question's not even in the vouchers.
It's not in the vouchers.
Okay. Gotcha. Yes, thank you.
Counselor Freeman.
Yes.
Counselor Denny, yes, with the same caveat as Counselor Chavis. Counselor Russ?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
No.
Counselor Shavlot?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So the vouchers are approved eight-one.
That's with the expectation that the next meeting, there'll be an ordinance, move capital budget over to contractual services. Is that right?
Not allowed to do that anymore.
Well, you can.
All right, so move to unfinished business.
So you're coming back to? I think that was part of Shavlot's motion, wasn't it? Wasn't that part of your motion that the voucher, approve the vouchers with the expectation that an ordinance will be at the next meeting to move capital budget over to contractual services?
Was that your discussion? Because I voted yes to pay the vouchers, not to anticipate an ordinance.
Yeah, I guess I don't want to tie it to that, but we've got a commitment here from him that they're going to get an ordinance for us.
Yeah, that's a promise.
For our next meeting. So yeah, just strike that, Kathy.
Just to approve the vouchers.
Vouchers, yeah.
Eight to one.
I get it. It'll be fine. I get it.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so now we'll move to unfinished business. Proposal number 24.
Proposal number 24, 2022, introduced by Counselor Wells. A proposal for an ordinance establishing compensation for elected officials for the City of Lawrence, Indiana for the year 2023 and providing a time when the same shall take effect.
That still remains in committee as a whole.
Is there a reason why we can't vote on it tonight? It's already been discussed multiple times.
We haven't even been given the, the information yet. We haven't had an opportunity. We asked for, I don't know if you recall.
I do.
Counselor Shavlot, but we asked for the ranges and we haven't discussed it since it was provided to us. So we are supposed to have another committee as a whole. Our commitment was to discuss and vote on it at the next meeting because we haven't had another meeting since we asked follow-up questions and asked for additional information.
Thank you. Next is proposal number 28.
Proposal number 28, 2022, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation notes for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of the issuance of the notes and appropriating the process thereof.
We heard that in committee as the whole tonight.
Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve, proposal number 28, please.
The amended version? To accept the amended version?
Yes, accept the amended. Yes, sorry. Jumped ahead.
So, Ms. Wheeler, could you, is that, would be the process to accept the amended version or?
If you want to vote, to have your final vote on the amended version rather than the one with the higher amounts and without the specific exhibit A, the proper procedure would be first to vote on the amendment only and then to vote on whether to accept the amended version, if that makes sense.
Okay. So your motion, could you restate your motion, please?
I would like to make a motion to accept the amended version.
I'll second that.
Second? Okay. All right, so by roll call vote, I'll go in the same order as before. Counselor.
Counselor Denny.
Oh, is there any discussion? I'm sorry, thank you.
Yeah, discussion, discussion, please. I just have, I was rereading the, the amended version and I know we're trying to get this done, but I want to, I want to ask a couple of clarifying questions about the amended ordinance. Our understanding is that from the committee as a whole meeting, that the $3.6 hundred thousand was to cover the projects and priority that are in the exhibit. So I, I, I need clarification on why in the first, in the third, whereas, the last few sentences, why does it, or I'm a little confused that it says, for the purposes of providing payment or reimbursement. What are we reimbursing? And then all or a portion of the costs, I don't understand why it says a portion and why it doesn't say all, since we've committed to those specific projects at those specific cost. And then thirdly, let me see, there was another third. What are the preliminary expenses that are related? So I guess there's a lot of opportunity for additional costs based on how the third whereas is written, that I'm not, I'm not confident as to how much money is going to be outlaid for preliminary cost, for reimbursements, how much is really left after the 3.6 million? And, and if there is no amount, then why is it included? So someone can speak on that.
Thank you, Controller.
Okay, so I'm going to clarify and make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Third whereas, first I, second I, and third I, parentheses there, is that what you're referencing?
Yes.
So let me read it. Kind of wish Adam didn't leave. I think that, to me, that.
Well, I don't know why it says reimbursement, because I think the question's been asked a couple of times about like engineering and different costs that would sort of be preliminary in nature. But I guess more importantly, like, it makes me a little concerned that even though we have those items listed down and we have the dollar amounts, how much after we pay these potential things, and I'm saying, I understand that they could be potential, they could be real, right? But how much is really left? How much of this work are we really going to get done? So I'm just, it, I didn't think that there were, outside of the legal fees, I didn't think there were other reimbursement or preliminary work that was part of this.
Yeah, I'd have to defer to Bruce or Adam, who, Adam left after the last meeting. There is no reimbursement. I, I have to assume that's some standard, you know, payment of or reimbursement. I think it's just a standard little clause there that he, that Bruce probably threw in originally out of precaution per se, but you could slash the or reimbursement portion there. So for the purpose of providing for the payment of or reimbursement, that or reimbursement could go, there is no reimbursement. All or a portion of the costs, I believe that the all or a portion of is just saying, if you get to the last project and you didn't have, let's say, because they're in order of priority, let's say community park came in at like 1 million 50,000. You could use the funding first to the 1 million 50,000. So if we had to do, let's say, a million 5,000 to make it easier, the DPW streets is 1 million 205. So you could drop the 5,000 off. So the portion is, let's say that maybe this project listed, maybe DPW comes in, it's one, originally the design is 1.2, 1 million 250,000. You could fund the portion if you decided you would just run out of the money. I mean, it, it's a, I think it's just a clause in there that he just added as a precaution. I don't want to, I'm not an attorney, so I don't want to speak for him. I would have to look at what I have, which is just old examples to see if that's standard language.
Counselor, do you have a thought? Do you have any feedback on that?
I think that language is barely standard, Madam Chair. However, I think that you're right in that other things we haven't discussed could conceivably be taken out, like to pay Mr. Swince for his accounting analysis, I think was another thing that was discussed in addition to the legal fees. But it's not uncommon for certain costs to be kind of front-loaded and paid by the city and then the city gets reimbursed.
So it's not uncommon, but we've asked what those costs are. And if my memory served me correctly, it was 77,000 dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
For the bondings. And there was no other monies discussed. So I just want to understand, out of the 3.6 million that we're approving, how much of that money is actually going for the work and how much of it is going for reimbursements?
We're not, we're not even going to, I mean, this, again, I think that reimbursement clause is just in there. It's kind of standard language. We're not even going to reimburse ourselves for the design that we already did. That, we had already moved beyond that. The whole 3.6 was going towards the projects. And then to Ms. Wheeler's point, the three or the last section there, cost of selling and issuing notes, everything from Bruce and Swince will come out of the cost of selling, the issuance, so.
Yep, yep, yep. And they made that clear. So I'm really clear on that. I just, I just wanted to make sure for the reimbursements, I wanted to be sure what was included in that. Because I think my understanding is the 3.6 million less the 77,000 is all going to the project work.
When you're referencing the 77,000, you're talking about the design for community park?
No, the legal, for the bond.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we're on the same page there then.
So is that an accurate statement?
Yes, that would be accurate. Now, the reimbursement, we haven't already paid them, so there is no reimbursement. It would come out of the cost of issuance at, at the time.
So there, so the question is, there's no other reimbursement?
Correct.
That we are going to do as part of this 3.6 million dollars that's part of this ordinance?
Correct. We could, that first section, for the purpose of providing for the payment of or reimbursement, that or reimbursement could be striked out. I didn't catch it. I just, when I did this, I just did a control F to find all the 5.8, switch it to 3.6, and then wrote the first whereas and made sure Bruce was comfortable with it. I didn't know there was a reimbursement piece in there until.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Giles?
The, and I'm sorry, my electronics died, so I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I apologize. The, thank you. I'm concerned about the projects. The parking lot is just sitting on me. Wasn't that a million? That's the biggest deal on it, isn't it, the parking lot?
Community Park parking lot is the biggest.
Is that just the front lot, like that we, that's right there on Franklin?
So that front lot would get new, it would need islands put in and there's a bunch of, apparently historically speaking, there's drainage issues that make that one much more expensive than.
Oh, okay. Because I was thinking, my church parking lot's way bigger than it. And I know we didn't pay a million dollars to fix the church parking lot. I'm, I mean, that's what I was sitting there trying to swallow this, you know?
Lighting, well, good for that.
We could do that in energy savings later. I mean, the whole park, I live the city and you forgot the parking lot over there?
In doing this parking lot, does it preclude any reconfiguration of the park if it's looked at as far as redesign? I mean, once the parking lot is in.
Of the entire park?
Right.
I mean, you wouldn't have any issues as long as you.
Tyler, Tyler, this is, this is Sri. I can, I can talk to that if you want.
Okay, please.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Sri. I didn't realize you were on the.
No, he was on.
Tyler, I can talk to that specific question if you like.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you.
So the parking lot design has been completed. It's been out for bid right now. The bids will be due back December 7. The engineer's estimate is, is very close to a million dollar, like that's 990, 997,000, some unchanged. That's why I just had the million dollar in there. The parking lot design does include some reconfiguration. It would include elimination of the south. And if you look at the, the parking lot right now, there is a south parking lot which is not being used. It's basically used for criminal activities. So we are removing that south side and we are just making it more like a grassy area with a trail that's coming and connecting it to the sidewalk on the south. So there is some reconfiguration, but most, most of all, the, the main parking lot itself is going to stay as it is. So there is some reconfiguration, but most, for most of all, the count, the, the main parking lot itself is going to stay as it is with some islands, some lights and some new paving and the new drainage, because drainage has been a big issue with that parking lot. So we are adding some inlets and stuff to take the water away from the parking lot into the, the creek on the north side. So the, the part of there, like I said, the, the design is being completed. The, the project is out for bid right now. If you go to our website, it's already listed in our website under the bid opportunities. You know, contractors are looking at bidding it on the December 7th. And we'll, you know, we don't know what the, the estimate is going to be back at, but the engineer's estimate is very close to, that, very, very close to that, so.
And was there other, um, thank you, Sri for that. Were there other funding opportunities you looked at regarding grants or any other pieces, even with, with some of the ADA pieces?
Counselor Denny, we got, regarding, you know, like infrastructure, like parking lots and stuff like that, there is literally no funding available. The, most of the funding that's available is for like trails, you know, widening of streets, sidewalks. So this is parking lots for, for buildings and facilities are not covered under any grants that we have. So this is the only opportunity we have to fix the parking lot. There is nothing out there to fix, and no other grant is available out there. And in my knowledge, historically, there has not been any grants for fixing parking lots.
I, I more was referring to the, the ADA pieces.
The ADA, the ADA is just like a very minimal piece of the, the design itself, Counselor Denny. The only ADA thing is you might see some ramps going into the buildings and some new parking, parking spaces for vans and handicapped spaces. Other than that, there is not a big ADA piece to the parking lot itself. It's more like fixing the drainage, fixing the payment and re, you know, and, and making the parking lot look like an actual, in a usable lot.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm just thinking, the, the cost seems to be vastly different. I know we, we began this conversation in early 2020 even, and it seems like the cost, even for the design, is, is vastly different than, than it was two and a half years ago.
It's, it's, it's all goes back to the, the revised prices and all that. You know, things have not been the same as six months ago. So everything is escalated, everything like, you know, if you would have bid this six months ago, this would have been a $750,000 job. But now it's next year's project, it's not a 2022 construction anymore, so it's a 2023 construction. That, that itself changes the cost quite a bit. When you, you know, so that's how you see, like, that's how I keep saying, like, six months will make a difference, because when you, when you may miss a construction season, that changes the cost.
Any other, thank you, Sri. Any other questions or? I'll just make one more comment for myself as a personal, personal comment. I mean, considering the, the other conversation we had regarding vouchers and, and looking at funds and moving things around, I get really nervous regarding this size of, of bond, so I'm, I, I'm leaning towards a no personally at this point, just because of the various questions regarding the, the level of, of where the finances will go and the control of the, the funds, especially without an internal auditor at this time. So any, any further discussion from anyone? Okay, so we're voting to click, to bring back the motion, we're, we're voting to amend, to accept the- So Counselor Wheeler, just so we understand, we'll end up having two votes, is that correct? One for the amendment and the one to adopt?
Correct.
Okay, so this is a vote for the amendment. So I'll, I'll go in the same order as I did before. Counselor Chavis.
So with the amended striking or reimbursements, please, please make that note that the controller agreed to strike or reimbursements from that, I believe it was the third whereas clause. Do you have that, Counselor Wheeler?
Yes, but of course I don't have a way to strike it because I'm not there, but yes.
Yeah, yeah. No, I don't, I just want to make sure it's on the record.
Yes.
From the third whereas? We're going to strike the word reimbursement?
I'm looking for it as well. Where are you at?
Right here. The third whereas.
Okay.
Yes, I was accepting amended version.
And strike the word reimbursement from the third whereas?
Yes.
Right before the letter I.
Yeah.
Lisa, if you're voting, you need to be on screen.
Yes, I know that. Thanks for the reminder. Yes. There's, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Whitfield?
I'm voting yes with the amended being struck with the whereas for reimbursement.
Counselor Wells?
This is the one that goes, that takes it from five down to three million. Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Denny, yes. Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlot?
Yes.
So the amended passed nine zero. And now we would need a motion to adopt the amended version.
I'll make a motion to adopt the amended version.
There's a motion?
Second.
Is that?
Sharon.
Counselor Freeman? Second by Counselor Freeman. Any discussion? All right, we've had pretty good discussion on this one. All right, Counselor, still, I'll go in the same order. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Wells? Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Denny, yes. Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlot?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's eight to one, correct?
Next on the agenda is proposal number 30. I'll give you a second.
Proposal number 30, 2022, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the Lawrence municipal code to establish an all-way stop intersection at Barksdale Way and Melroy Road.
And it's currently assigned to code? Proposal number 31.
Proposal number 31, 2022, introduced by Counselor Denny. A proposal for an ordinance repealing Title I, Article I, Chapter 3, Section 2 of the municipal code of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, regarding governmental structure and administration.
Okay, it's currently assigned to finance, and I'm sure we'll act with everyone on when those two committees are meeting. Next on the agenda is new business. There are, there is none. We are adjourned. Thank you.